We're ready.
Sure.
Hear you, hear you, hear you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
For the place tonight, we have some guests, some Eagle Scouts from our local troops that are going to lead us into place tonight. So if you guys will come forward to the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. We're gonna, we need to, we're gonna go ahead and do prayer.
Sure, I guess, as you said.
Everybody just please stand and do prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that we live in a country where we can come and be able to express our views and we may not always agree with everyone, but at least we have the opportunity to do that. We appreciate and respect the fact that we live where we live. We just ask that you watch over us, you try to bless the people in Howard County, bless the people of the state of Indiana, help us as we make decisions that we might always have you in our hearts and minds as we make those decisions. And we just once again ask that you bless us, you watch over us, and you protect us. In your name that we pray, amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Lepensky's been to read the names of our Eagle Scouts.
Okay. Alexandria, Alexander Amaya. Is Alexander here?
Yeah.
Come on up, sir. Eli Boltman. Did I say that correctly?
Yep.
Levi Bradford. Okay. Isaac Banazak. Cora Ebert. Jeremiah Hackett. Trenton Hendricks. Curtis Hampton. Jude Hoxit. No Boy. Skylar Kenny, is that correct? I might not be correct. Hazen Kinzlow. Jerome. Kenoma. David Schultz. John Sonnabird. Okay. Is your troop leader, I saw somebody, they can come get him and pass him up.
Thank you, guys. Good job, guys.
Yep.
Thank you, guys, for coming up and letting us be part of this. This is a milestone not achieved by many, but well deserved.
All right, Sheriff, for the motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Removed.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all of here say aye.
Aye.
Post. They are approved. All right, Department of Business reports, Treasurer's Office, Kristi Branch.
Okay. The spring collection rate in the Treasurer's Office for 2022 was 95% collecting $50,503,027.82 for the first installment taxes last year. The fall collection rate for the second installment was over 93% collecting $49,898,464.29. Within that combination, the two installments for the 21 pay 22 tax year, we collected a total of $100,393,492.11 of taxpayer dollars at a 94% rate. The revenue from the 2022 tax sale was $273,622.48. This amount consisted of 98 parcel tax lien certificates sold on the October 6th tax sale, resulting in those said parcels to be back on the tax rule, which is the ultimate goal moving forward. The collection of innkeeper's tax that the Treasurer's Office took in for 2022 was $1,195,612.98. And that figure is up 16% compared to 2021's collection of innkeeper's tax. The total interest earned in 2022 through our local banks, CDs, and federal agency bonds was $977,332.2. As you can see from the interest and investment spreadsheet attached, that we are up an amazing 358% compared to 2021's earned interest, which is just awesome. And I plan on continuously growing upward with the interest earned for Howard County with the taxpayer dollars. The investment policy and list of approved depositories has changed as of June 7th, 2022. When it comes to the purpose, everything remains the same minus the updated date of approved depositories and the change of one of my deputies that has the authority to transact in the name of the Howard County Treasurer with First Farmers Bank and Trust, county's general count, that being Kristi Moser, my supervising deputy that took over for the previous deputy, May 1st, 2022. The approved depository change with some institutions being added and others being removed from the approved listing. This change does not affect Howard County and the business we uphold with our already established institutions. That's what I have for the finance meeting.
Looks like we jumped ahead a little bit.
I know. I was gonna say something, but I thought, well, just go ahead and, yeah, we need to do the election of officers and approval of that previous.
Okay. Except for mine. I think that was the last.
We need to go ahead and elect officers for Board of Finance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, discussion.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we elect Jeff Lipinski as President of Board of Finance for 2023.
Well, second that. All in favor, say aye. Jeff is our president. We need Vice President.
Make a motion to Jack Dodd be the Vice President.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post. That is passed. And then Kristi Branch is our Secretary, I guess, by default.
Yes.
By default. So.
Well, I have, I have you, Brad, and Jeff flip flopped. But I don't think, I mean, I can change the paperwork, the last page, and have you guys sign it at a later date.
Then it's fine, you want to sign it later.
Yeah, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay, yes, fine.
Okay.
We need to approve. This is yours now, I'll let you do it. You're President. Especially after approving the minutes from the last meeting.
Approval of the minutes from the 2022 meeting.
Remove to approve the minutes from the 2022 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Mr. Bray. Any other discussion?
That's right.
Again, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. That passes. We did the review of the financial institutions, I believe, already.
Yes.
What about the investment policy we did? I think that can adjourn this portion of the finance meeting.
Were there any changes on that list?
I'm sorry?
Were there any changes on that list?
Which list?
That list for the approved financial institution.
Yes, there were some that were added and there were some that have been removed.
Were those the highlighted ones?
No, that's just the way that printed out.
Question, Kristi.
Yes.
Interest rates have obviously went up.
Yes.
And I know that one expires here soon, so you'll be, I'm sure you'll be negotiating on that. But the one that doesn't expire for a year, are we stuck in that or is there any negotiation with that? I mean, we can always try to negotiate it. I guess maybe we might want to take a look at that and see if we could, I don't know the page, I was just looking at it, but maybe we could talk to them and see if they're willing to do anything since it's a significant amount of money that you have invested with them. Maybe they would be willing to upgrade our interest rate because it doesn't mature for almost a year.
Yes.
That would just be a suggestion. I don't know if they will or they won't, but maybe you could check into that.
I will definitely. That's actually the institution I just opened up a CD with today at a 4.9% rate, which is four times what that one is.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I think I'm up next.
Motion to move to the commission meeting again.
Yep.
Motion to close the Board of Finance and move to the commission meeting.
Aye.
I guess I didn't make that motion, he seconded, is that?
Yep. We're back into the commission meeting. Thank you, Kristi. If you want, this, um, changes get back to the commission.
Yeah, sure.
She's, I guess, right now, she's got more business.
Got more business?
Yes.
Oh, you just get one, I'm sorry, keep going.
Yeah, this is the, for the LND Mail Masters Service Agreement. This is the company that prints and mails out our bills for the last three years. So I'm presenting the services agreement between LND Mail Masters and my self-iced treasurer. I provided the agreement to Alan last month and he approved with no red flags. LND Mail Masters is a vendor that we've utilized, I guess, since 2020, taking care of all of the printing and mailing of the tax bills. They're a wonderful company to work with, always on top of the full process, staying on schedule each step of the way and providing service for our county. The postage is an estimated fee due before the printing process begins, which is $16,800, along with the printing process being an estimate as well at this time in the amount of $11,237.87. The true cost will be determined once the actual bills are completed and mailed out in April. The difference between what was paid out in 2022 compared to the 2023 estimate is less than $2,000. This, I believe, is due to the new price increase in postage this year and the ongoing rise in supplies as well. Pretty sure I emailed everybody on that one, the service agreement.
Make a motion to accept the LND Mail Masters Service Agreement.
Thank you.
Motion second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Any signatures on any, Kristi, for that?
For that?
For the Mail Masters, any signatures or anything?
For the LND Mail Masters?
Yeah.
Pretty sure I emailed it to you, but I'll send it back to you.
I've got it right here, why don't we just sign it right now?
That's what I'm saying. You have to chase us down that way.
I wasn't thinking.
That's fine.
I've got it right here, mind me. Do you want my?
No, that's all right.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kristi. Next up, Amber Toll from the Highway Department.
I have the agreement for the design for our community crossings that we were awarded last December. So this is the 2022 award that we got for County Road 1250 West. So this is the design portion of that project. This portion is non-refundable. This is not part of the community crossings, but the design is needed to build the community crossings project. So the total for that design, which includes geotech and survey, utility coordination, and construction phase consulting, if we need it, the total for that is $96,700. That's probably a little bit more steep than what our normal design is, but it's because it's geotech that is included in this design. We need a pretty substantial retaining wall for this roadway. That's why it's failed and why we keep having to do these minor repairs. So this is the full repair to get the road back in service. A couple of these fees we may or may not use, hopefully we don't need all of these. And so we definitely need a total of $83,900. The other portion, the utility coordination and some of the construction consulting fees, those are just as needed and not to exceed the total of $96,700. So I'm requesting an approval of that contract.
Remove to approve the approval of design contract not to exceed $96,500.
700, sorry. Sorry.
Right?
$96,700.
700.
Yes.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Approved.
Okay.
Hey, Amber, I wanted to compliment you and your staff on the roads. I know you guys had a tough battle because you got them down and the wind picked up. You guys did a great job and I appreciate your efforts and I think most of the people were pretty pleased, so. Thank you.
You guys worked very hard.
Thank you.
Yes, they did.
It was a journey out there on some of those days, wasn't it?
It was, yeah, just when you think we have it contained, then the wind picked up again, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's all.
Thank you, Amber. All right. Next up, 4C Health, Dr. Kari Cadwell. Make sure annual up.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm back this year, a little bit grayer, but still positive updates for you today. So we come every year, we're obviously not your designated community mental health center, but we've been actively building mental health services here in Howard County since 2015, actually. So I'm happy to say that in this last year, we served in all of our Howard County operations 2,960 individuals. And that really comes out to roughly about just a little over 53,000 mental health and substance use contacts for Howard County. While it is that there are two inpatient units already here in Kokomo, actually Howard County residents also utilize our inpatient unit, which is currently up in Logan's Port, but within probably about 12 months will be relocated to Peru, so even closer to this area. And so that totaled 156 bed days that Kokomo Howard County residents used our inpatient unit. Overall, for the year, obviously we have some clients who enter a new year and they're already clients, and then we have new admissions or just admissions in general, right? Everybody has to start a service somehow. In this last year, we had 1,186 new admissions to Howard County Services for 4C Health. I like to point to that number and break it down. So of that, 65% were new admissions. And why that's important is that means that we're reaching new people, right? That's the first time that they've ever come to 4C Health for a service, their first episode of care. And so we continue each year to reach, really in Howard County, it's usually closer to about a 60-40 split, okay, of new clients to readmissions. And we have 35% that are readmissions, so folks who graduated on from care. And the thing with behavioral health is these are relapsing and remitting conditions, right? And so it's pretty typical that if somebody has one episode, they're probably gonna have another in the course of their lifetime. And so we had 35% readmission, so they came back to 4C Health for care. So we always want to see a good mix of not too many readmissions that aren't needed, but at the same time, always reaching new folks. In terms of substances, we see in our substance use service division here in Howard County, the top would be alcohol, actually, for us. The second is marijuana, the third is methamphetamine, and the fourth is actually opioids. So we see a lot of services for those, what I would say are far more traditional things, right? That people, it's terrible when you say that methamphetamine is traditional, but it's been around a little bit longer, okay, than what we're dealing with with the opioid crisis. And so I like to point that out because really, when we're looking at substance use disorder, while we want to give as much attention to folks that are experiencing and impacted by the opioid use struggles, there are a lot of people who die from alcohol-related incidents still. And that's important, and the same with the methamphetamine. We see that actually in all of our rural counties still. The other two things that I'll just mention, and then really I'll hand it off to the star of the show in Howard County, which is, you know, Lisa Willis-Gidley. I just kind of sidekick really to her as the CEO. So we do a consumer rating every couple of months and we ask folks, hey, you just had a service at 4C Health, you know, what was that experience? What star rating would you give us on a total of five stars? That, you know, that being, most of you would imagine five stars being the top. So our current rating, so in our annual report, we were at about 3.2 stars. And recently, when we redid this, we were at 3.95 stars. And so I'm really, really happy about that because we're really trying to focus in on the quality experience for the consumers. I'm sure we don't get it perfect all the time. And over 53% of the respondents who responded to that survey gave 4C five stars for the service that they received at their recent appointment. The last thing I'll let you know is I think you may be familiar with the fact that 4C Health is one of the five state pilots for Mobile Crisis. We've been doing Mobile Crisis for two and a half years now in four northern counties. We're almost at about 3,000 deployments and we were provided a grant to expand that to Howard, Tipton, and White County. And our Mobile Crisis teams will go live here in this county as of May 1st. And so that is a number that law enforcement can call. We'll expand that also to a lot of the intellectual and developmental providers in this area who also need crisis response, you know, and for youth and responding to schools. So having said that, I'm gonna let Lisa tell you a little bit more of the details of services that she's been working on for Howard County.
Hello. Nice to see you all again. So I'm just gonna talk about some specific programs that we've been working on within Howard County. One of those being Sergeant Place. So if you're not familiar, we have a partnership, 4C Health has a partnership with Abenex Housing, a 35-unit apartment complex that is permanent supportive housing. So 4C is not the property management, we are the supportive side. We provide services and then support even if they're not within our service lines. Currently, we are serving 48 adults and 35 children in that apartment complex. Keeping in mind that these individuals were homeless before they came to us. So if they were not in that apartment complex, unfortunately, they may be living out on the street right now. So we provide them with resources. They come off of the coordinated entry list, if you're familiar with that process. So they have to meet those certain criteria. But we provide them with resources preventing eviction so that they're not in homeless status again and then life skills so that they can be successful within those apartments. We have monthly events that are related to giving them education on health concerns, on harm reduction, on HIV testing, all of those kind of tools to help them be successful, as well as family meals, holiday meals, kids' activities. We have a lot of youth that live there, so we always want to make sure that not only are their needs met, but are they getting those supportive services so that they can be successful as they enter into adulthood. We have onsite services, skill-building therapy, and they have access to tele-psychiatric as well. Carrie mentioned Mobile Crisis Team will be coming May 1st. So in lieu of planning for that, last year I was asked if we were going to be serving more adults in this community. We will be moving towards doing an adult-intensive services, which is an ag team. In Howard County, we already serve a number of adults. However, we will be creating a team that will be much more intensive in serving those adult populations. When Mobile Crisis Team comes, we will, you know, obviously get a lot more calls and some of those even being from like homeless shelters. And so that gives us the ability to better serve those individuals. In partnership with Juvenile Probation and Kokomo Schools, both of those agencies we have very good relationships with, came to us and had additional needs for their students and those juveniles that are on probation. They were having, you know, a group of students that just could not be successful within the classroom all day. However, they need to be in school and not at home. So we have created a classroom that will be at Bon Air. And so those kids that are struggling, they are also on probation, they will be attending that class and getting some, a couple hours of instruction on a daily basis, but then focusing the rest of the day on life skills and coping skills and strategies that will make them more successful within the classroom so that they can stay in school all day and be successful academically. One last thing, and then I promise I will stop talking. We were recently granted from SANSA a grant for mental health first aid and QPR training in 13 counties, Howard County being one of them. So you soon will probably see or hear about opportunities for us to be able to train individuals in both of those areas. And the great thing about this opportunity is not only can we devote to individuals, strictly to training individuals in the community, but we will reach outside of schools and law enforcement and be reaching individuals that interact with the community and the public every day. So whether that be a barista or somebody, a hairdresser or somebody like that that's interacting with people in the community daily. So that's all I got.
Yeah.
If any questions, otherwise.
I think maybe you guys kind of sold yourselves a little bit short in the fact that I've worked with both of you over the years in my previous life, I guess. I don't, could you briefly touch on like the evening reporting program so that people have an idea of some of the different things that you're doing about kids that are really at risk and what you do for them in the evenings as well?
Sure, yeah. So we have what's called Evening Reporting Center, ERC for short. So those are youths that are at risk of moving to DOC or with Kinzie. And so we want to keep them out and keep them home. However, between the hours of four and eight are peak hours where some of our youth tend to find themselves getting into trouble. So our staff run a program in the evenings, Monday through Friday, four to eight. We do have like high-intensity need individuals as well as lower intensity need. And we provide services to them, it happens at Kinzie. So we also take advantage of their dinner program and their, some of their facilities as well. These youths do go out into the community and give back. They've done things with like community gardens and some cleanup for housing authority, things like that. So we do try to engage them so they can also give back to the community and just trying to give them an opportunity to be more successful.
Thank you. On your new admissions, did you have that, do you have any breakdown on adults versus kids?
You know, I do, I can actually send that to you by email. I didn't bring it with me today, but we do. We have that based upon age and also payer source. Generally, I can tell you for payer source, we are, we run about 60% Medicaid hip and smaller portions of Medicare, health pay, and commercial insurance.
Thank you.
I was really excited when you started talking about your ag team and doing more with the adults here in Howard County. As you know, we have a, I'm sure Sheriff's Department can tell you about what we have with our turnover in jail, you know, people winding back up in our jail on a repetitive basis. So I was really excited to hear you talk about that and I appreciate what you guys are doing. Look forward to more of it.
Oh, we'll keep it up. We'll be back grayer, but with more services next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving into claims reports. Salary claims.
I have two.
Remove to approve as presented.
Second. Motion second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That is approved. Payroll expense.
$926,838.73 and $1,00900. 926,838.73, and one, or, and 25,028.20.
Remove to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Operating claims.
Remove to approve as presented.
Motion second to approve, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Any claims to ratify?
We have one for Owens and Minor, and the amount of $3,106.1.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Uh, monthly reports.
I have the county treasurer's monthly report for December.
As received. Any grants to go over?
None.
None. All right. County attorney.
I have three things for the, the boards, first is the approval of a contract between Insolidated Admin Services in Howard County, this is the, uh, company that administers our employee benefits, Cobra, uh, those types of things, and I present that contract to you, it just requires, uh, one signature on the three places where I've marked there.
Make a motion to accept as read.
Motion second to accept, and it offered me to sign, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
You'll just sign, I'll fill in the rest of it, Brad.
Okay, thank you. Down to where we're at here. Two places?
There's three places, one more.
I missed one. Yep.
Secondly, uh, this is a ready grant agreement that was under a deadline, so you've signed it already, we just need to have your signature ratified on it.
Move to ratify the president's signature.
Second. Motion second to ratify my signature, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Lastly, the opioid, national opioid litigation continues, Howard County has received, uh, funds for this already, last year, and, uh, the, there's another settlement that's been proposed, and we have some documents to opt into that settlement. This is a settlement agreement and an exhibit there too that requires signature of, uh, president of the board, I'll present that to you for approval. This is just a, to accept as, yeah, to, to accept a settlement pending against Meyer Incorporated.
Make a motion that we accept.
Motion second to accept, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. All right, commission issues, Commissioner Dodd.
I have one item, this is a, uh, scope of work, um, agreement from DLZ, this is an agreement to allow them to do a study out of our jail, to look at, uh, or to acquire some data, to see what the needs out of jail is, uh, just basically looking at the jail to see, um, whether or not we move forward with a needs assessment, um, on whether or not we need a new jail, this is something that's been talked about for a long time, and this will give us more data to look at that. So this is a, what, like I said, it's a scope, the basic scope of work, allowing DLZ to do that.
Need approval for the board.
I, I need, um, us to approve this scope of work.
Zero. Cost associated with that, Jay?
Cost is, um, roughly about $9,000, take three to four months to complete.
Make a motion that we accept the DLZ, um, proposal?
I'll second that. So all payers say aye?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Mesky?
Uh, nothing.
I have nothing, uh, probably come in.
Ma'am? Sir? In case you don't know my name, it's Brad Simone, live at 10954 East 100 South Greentown. Have a question, I do a lot of thinking, I'm sure that surprised you, especially about the solar ordinance and the, uh, infiltration out here on the eastern side of Howard County by this company, um, one of our main concerns are property values, there's been a lot of talk about these agreements, my understanding is these agreements are the same as a contract. So I've got a scenario I was thinking about, and I said, you know, I don't know how that's handled, so, my scenario is, let's say we go with these agreements, and I decide I want to sell my house, the same day I want to sell my house, Immil Green Solar files for bankruptcy, who then is responsible, if you have that agreement in there, who's responsible for the property values at that time, because now they're gone, and they're bankrupt, so, you can't hardly hold the new guy accountable, right? So I'm just wondering how this works, because I don't know, so I'm going to ask questions and get answers.
You've got a legal for that. It's a complicated legal question, depends on what the contract says, and also depends on if they file bankruptcy, what the trustee of bankruptcy wants to do, something I can't answer off the top of my head right now.
Gotcha. Okay, still think should be in the ordinance, I think, uh, accountability's not asking a lot out of a big corporation, especially when they come in here to our county, talking about it won't affect my property value, I say, put your money where your mouth is, be accountable, it's not asking for a lot, and when you guys ask them, if we put this in our ordinance, how's that affect the project? When they say it stops the project, that should throw a red flag, red flag up for everyone on that board, every single one of you should be concerned at that point in time, because now you're dealing with 100-plus families out here, largest investments, sorry, out here, largest investments in their lives, it's not something we want to toy with, and I don't think you guys would want your investment toyed with, so, in the ordinances is law, right, that's how I understand this, ordinance is law, agreements are contracts, contracts with LLCs are crap, they can walk away from it at any point in time, and it's no, it's, it's not, it's not valid anymore, and I take the hit, I've got stuff I want to bring in, I'll bring it in at the, anyone want to bring it in today, because we have that appeal pending right now, but, uh, next meeting I do have packets for all of you, I will hope that you will read over, and not just set it over here for later, so, that's all I have, guys, thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Any other probably comment? Seeing none, retain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second to adjourn, all payers say aye? I think I suppose, so we're adjourned.